December nineteenth, two thousand sixteen. Our last meeting of the year.
Yes, it is.
So, maybe we have the adoption of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
One correction.
Division fourteen and Robert Cruz three at nineteen oh.
If there's no further discussion, maybe we have to vote.
Mr. Strachlin?
Yes.
Mr. Mutcher?
Yes.
Mr. Crockett?
Yes. A motion to approve payment of the bills to two hundred twenty-three thousand and nine dollars and twenty-nine cents, two thousand nine hundred and four dollars and twenty-five cents from the general, twelve thousand eight hundred and four dollars and ninety-six cents from fire, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and four cents from cemetery, four thousand three hundred and three seventeen cents from EMS billing, and two thousand six hundred and ten eighty-seven from Road and Bridge.
Motion to be approved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Not. Maybe we take a vote.
Mr. Strachlin?
Yes.
Mr. Crockett?
Yes.
Mr. Mutcher?
Yes.
Okay. Under correspondence, we received the Ohio Township Association newsletter, information from Breckler, from Brecker and Eckler regarding construction law, Otarmy newsletter, emails from MRV PC regarding the December, January meeting cancellations, facility planning subcommittee materials, news releases, public participation meeting and transit project survey, emails from the Green County Association regarding the passing of the New Jasper Township trustee Kathy Benjamin, Association two thousand seventeen meeting schedule, twelve thirteen minute meeting minutes, and twelve nine legislative words. Email from Mary Howler in regards to pay information for Miami Township Road Department.
This apparently is a woman who works, I don't remember, works for Allen Stock of Zia Township. It's amazing they've got a township administrator and they've got an assistant township.
They have an assistant?
Yeah, he has an assistant. They wanted to know how much we spent on road, well, I guess on roads. Not maintenance, but how much the budget was. They're going to compare it.
So how big is Zia Township?
The bigger we are.
Thirty-five miles of roads.
Something like that.
Yeah. That fire budget's huge.
Do they provide fire coverage for Zia?
No.
No?
But they've got the two stations and spread out. They'll, they'll pay people, there's no volunteers.
Would be an interesting financial comparison. Let's see. Let's see, email from YSI, from YS News reporter asking for interviews of township officials.
I responded to them and anybody else is welcome to respond to them as well. That was an open invitation to everyone.
I will. I got their phone number in my pocket. And then that guy's name.
Email requesting adoption of proclamation recognizing National School Choice Week and our fund status, revenue status, and appropriation status report.
So we do the proclamation for the education, education, I believe that's January, sometime January twenty-second, somewhere around there.
Okay.
It's next month.
So you're making a motion that we adopt the proclamation?
Yes.
Did we hear the proclamation?
Well, it's a whole page. You gonna get it, Mark?
And I noticed Mark had skipped over correspondence from the state about intersection of three forty-three and three seventy. We'll talk about that briefly under roads. I'm sure it was unintentional.
What did they skip over?
Correspondence about the intersection of three forty-three and three seventy.
I had to write this up here rather hard. You want to read it, huh? Whereas all children Miami Township should have access to highest quality education possible and whereas Miami Township recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Miami Township to be successful adults and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Miami Township and whereas, whereas is home to a variety of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children in addition to families who educate their children in the home and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy but also enhances the vibrancy of our community and whereas Miami Township has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness for the need for effective educational options. Now therefore Miami Township do hereby recognize January twenty-two to twenty-eight, two thousand seventeen, as Miami Township School Choice Week and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Amen.
My job on writing that proclamation. Since you've so moved the adoption of it, I will second that motion.
If there's no further discussion, maybe we take a vote, please.
Mr. Crockett?
Yes.
Mr. Strachlin?
Yes.
Mr. Mutcher?
Absolutely yes. Unequivocally yes.
All right. No fire department reports tonight?
Didn't see any members.
Bob, you got any something you'd like to do as a report?
I don't, but thank you for asking.
You could take this time to wax eloquently upon, you know, the importance of firing EMS and the service to residents.
Change your batteries in your smoke detectors.
There you go. I thought we did that when the time changed. You just like gently do it.
It's only this long. Think of the spur of the moment.
Okay.
And the fire department report.
Speaking of which, excuse me, I have a job.
What do we have?
Yes, I know.
Oh, okay. Let's go on to cemetery and road report.
I don't have too much. We had one burial, actually three since the last meeting, but we talked about two of them last week. And we just had one Saturday in Glifford.
Well, that was a lot of it.
It was a little messy. About the man, he was out tearing up two ads. I really don't have much of them.
Were they there on time, that sort of thing?
About fifteen minutes past, but I told him to help. They pushed it on with a little bit.
I imagine they just took our own real.
No, that was a good one. They were about fifteen, twenty minutes off. It worked out. Snowy and rain. That kind of helped us.
So if you want to, let us, I don't remember. Was this meeting the last one? You had, you had sold a couple scattering sites?
I sold, I mean, I sell two. Did she pay for two? She hasn't mailed it in, she's, she's going to mail the check in. I give her the address and all the info, she's going to mail it in, pay for two. And then when the time comes, she'll give us the, well, we have the info. I think that, did you meet with somebody else?
I thought you had met with somebody else who's.
I met with some people that bought it, ashes down in section T. And then I met with that lady. And we talked and she wants to mail it in, she's going to talk to the person.
Now, how is section T laid out? I was looking at the map.
It runs in rows, but it's kind of a V-shaped area or something, I guess. And they wanted to be behind his mother or someone right down there random. So I measured off and found that it's, it'd be grade eight or as well. Yes, it's kind of straight rows and a county walrus shaped area. I just kind of lined up and measured.
We're not, we're not actually offering them for sale. So we have got no information about.
And pretty much ashes. I don't know what goes on down there with that limestone. Actually, I did limestone the other day down in Fort Worth. And by that, yeah, it's just one solid chunk of limestone. We were deep enough, so I didn't mess with it.
Big rock.
And I might move over four or five foot and not get anything. That's the way, kind of. But yeah, I sold it, would have been three for the vendors, one people. So it would have been like three grades I sold, with two scatterings. So I think, I think we'll list them both separate, like her name and, she's on a census, the other being.
Do you remember whether Ms. McCallum, did she go in A or five or six?
We don't, she went in two.
Or two.
Grade, lot five, grades one, two, and three, and she went in two, and he'll be in three.
I guess with lot five, I was thinking about that grade five.
Yeah. That's the way it was in the books. And the headstone's that way, so that's the way I placed it. That was about all I know.
Now, I only have a minor question. Did I understand you drove the truck backwards?
Are we in roads? Are we in road report?
We're on the road now.
Okay.
Thanks for covering for me there Sunday morning.
I only have, I only have one.
It was a bad thing.
Yes, well, that was that way, Saturday, Saturday morning was.
Was it?
Sunday morning was.
And Sunday morning, I heard was just as bad.
I was on Hyde Road getting ready to turn in slant. And I'd been out enough and I knew it was slippery and I'm slippery. So I'm going nothing, like two miles an hour. And I want to turn on slant. So I got the thing stopped before the intersection, turning wheels to turn in slant, give it a hair, just keeps going straight. Had no intention whatsoever of turning. And of course, it wasn't going to go straight down Hyde, it was going to go straight into the woods there. So I do, I don't know better than to do that. So I back it up, doesn't really want to go anywhere, back up. The best I could do was just, just inch the wheel a little bit, you know, and back it up. And just, just inch it a little bit more. It took me about ten tries and I didn't get to the edge of the road because it kept slipping as I was going. And it finally got to, I go, oh, this is going to be a long morning here. And then, and then Mark was referring to, I could not for the life of me figure out how to do Bryant Park Road and I didn't want to leave it go. And I was sitting up at the top of it there where the, where the campsite is and I'm not walking around and I'm just sliding like, you know, I put some ice cakes on. I'm not going down that thing. And finally it dawned on me, I had to try going down to the, down and backing my way up. And I made it.
Hills, when it's ice, you don't have any choice. You can back down. But make sure you're putting lead in material.
I was going to say, I'd have been opening that door and letting it roll out.
Yeah. The Hyde Road Hill in Bryant Park, you always go up if you can.
Now, the Hyde Road Hill, I can, I can see that one, but.
You can go down, you could go down that hill if you done it enough.
I think he is having.
Did he went down towards for now?
Yeah, road club.
He could. He won't go very far, but it's good. I don't get down, I go up.
I would close it, just put your trestles up at road club.
Yeah.
So anyway, that was my fun time.
Little experience. I'm glad they should give you a little five little load in the back of.
Yeah, I think I'm more than that.
It's a lot easier. You don't, you know, don't take long to load the truck.
I didn't know I was going to have to put four loads in that thing.
I never thought about loading it Saturday afternoon. I would load it.
Oh, it was pretty full.
It had a couple, it had a couple scoot in it. But wouldn't have got you very far on ice. And ice kind of uses up our material. Which I hauled some in today. We're done. We're good for a little while, rest of the year.
Did you haul it in the, in the big truck?
Yeah, dump trucks.
Is that big truck going to run?
Yeah, it needs belts instead, it needs some work. We can go get them in if I can.
And that is, that's four loads, five loads? You said forty ton?
Forty ton, it's ten loads. Five, five loads in this truck. They couldn't haul, their, their stuff's all rigged up and they were loaded up. Fine, I, because yours was about empty, I dumped it off and rigged it so I could just lay the tailgate down and dump through. And the other one's working enough to use.
I was going to say, how's the?
I run a jumper and got everything working, but I still need to find out the wire that's not working, why it's not. But for now, if we can use it. I'm going to continue until it, it's, it's just that wire, I'm going to trace it down and see what.
The hydraulic square?
Yeah. I run a jumper over, it's true, the moment the pump comes in, it works just fine. All lights light up and so it's the wire that comes off of someone way tells us to do all that. Somewhere on the other end is not, not working, whether it burned through or something. But I run a jumper over to it so we can use it, because you turn more offs. And if I want to run it a long, long time, fear of overloading it. Because I don't have a fuse in it. I'm going to look at it a little bit in the morning and then there'll be some cold patch.
Yeah.
Maybe tomorrow, because Wednesday afternoon, it's going to be a little warmer.
Better time Thursday gets some.
We're talking, yeah, in like forties Friday and Saturday.
Maybe fifty, Christmas.
That'd be fine with me. But this is a good opportunity for me to get some cold patch, see if that looks like the weather's going. There's snowflakes or something Wednesday into Thursday, but I don't. Christian or whatever.
Really?
The ice of it. But I'll, I'd gladly show you sometime if you, like a pointer or two. It might be, it might be somehow, I don't know.
Well, I thought I'd take the little digger, but I had, well, I could have run that, but I thought that's not much of a bigger bucket.
The new digger? It'd take you a while to load with that thing. Unless you just want to try it out.
So what did you use to excavate the road?
Actually, I used the back because the digger, the left track would not move. Right track moved, the left one wouldn't. But I was able to get the back a little bit. It was the back first, now I'm going to check out that thing. We have warranty on it. Call and tell them, the left lever would not move. I don't know if it's cold. I haven't tried it.
There's tracks, you have to clean them. If they got mud on them, they're freezing.
It's not, it's not mud enough, it's, it's clean, clear. It's just the right side lever moves fine, left side would not move at all. I was hoping it was just because of the cold. That shouldn't affect it. Sometimes it would. But I still want to call a cannon, send a cannon.
Oh, yeah. So it's just actuating a valve, is that what it's doing or do you know what's?
You know, when you move these, they, it's a hydraulic mix. When you push them forward against the motor drive, it wouldn't even move any. And I didn't want to try, I tried forcing them.
But you think it's moving an electric switch under there?
I don't know.
Like a turn switch?
These are electric. But I don't know whether the drive to your pedals or whether their lever to run the front. But I want to call him and give him, hit up what's going on, maybe.
There's no locks?
I looked for brake, parking brake, parking brake's right here. The hand down, that engages everything. I don't know, I haven't tried it yet. But it would move. Can't use it if it won't move.
Nope. Finally got smart enough to go out there and unlock those, unlock those hubs so I could use, you know, use a four-wheel drive.
I saw it was in four-wheel drive.
Oh, that's right, I didn't change it back.
Did you leave them locked, did you unlock them?
No.
As long as it's that, he can run them locked, as long as you don't have it. If you just normally drive.
I couldn't tell that much difference in how, in how I drove in four-wheel drive. Frankly.
But you can tell when you turn. That's what it does.
Yeah.
You, you turn your drive.
Your lever in the truck isn't engaged, it's not in four-wheel drive.
Right. If you're just too high, you're not engaged, so you can run.
Just because the wheels are.
That's one more pilot to find, we'll lock them in, so if we need to go into four-wheel drive, we can, when we're in, without getting out. But I usually unlock them when we're not using. I noticed it was in four-wheel drive. Maybe that's why.
I mean, because of the weight differential, you know, it's taking so much weight, you know, it's hard to blade off those front wheels. Because it's just, it's just obviously got nothing up there most of the time.
It's your snowplow, so.
Yeah, that's a helper there, if you didn't have a bottom there, it would be even.
We'd get studded tires on that thing.
Be careful.
Exactly.
Slow it, can't, can't go fast.
Well, at least I didn't put in the ditch, so I figured.
Two miles an hour does not constitute fast.
Ah, let's see, other than that, I think I will take half a day driving. Get to the airport, just fly in. If you're there at seven, okay, I'll get over there in time. Get over there about five o'clock.
You agree with that, Mr. President?
Or C four nine two?
Florida, the long system.
Any more questions about the roads? Let's go on to fiscal offices.
Hi, we have our last amendment of permanent appropriations for two thousand sixteen.
Maru, could you, could you give me one sec now that?
Sure.
We talked about the last meeting of the road, we didn't discuss that quick, that quick message about three forty-three and three seventy. We've talked about this at other meetings, we finally got a definite opinion from the man at the state of Ohio and he was suggesting an additional intersection sign on the other side of the Yeltspringe side of three forty-three and putting the name of, either, I don't know if they'd put Junction Meredith Road or Junction three seventy, whatever, on it, but whichever. And now I can't remember. Lamar, what else did it say?
On the sign?
Said, said that we, they would put signs on Meredith Road too. Did it say that?
I'll get it.
I got it, I read it, but it, it just didn't seem to me like we're getting much results. I've been reading.
They did say that they would look into any vegetation clearings.
It said that they have time. But it seemed like they.
What are they trying to do?
Three forty-three and there.
You want to post lead or something?
Increase the visibility of the intersection.
Sure. At Dawson place?
They're going to put additional signs on three forty-three, warning people.
Warning for the intersection.
Do you want me just to read this out loud?
Sure.
First is a list of crash records. And then it says, based on the crash experience for this location, we would typically recommend considering low-cost countermeasures such as modifications to signing or pavement markings. In reviewing the advanced intersection signage along State Route three forty-three, it appears that there are some modifications that could make the intersection more visible. Specifically, we will add a second intersection ahead warning sign on each State Route three forty-three approach as well as name plaques that inform drivers which approach is Meredith. With regards to vegetation at the intersection, it does not appear to be a major influence in crashes at the intersection. However, I will ask our county maintenance forces to determine if there are any opportunities to clear vegetation that may be influencing site distance in the right way. If you have any questions or would like to discuss further, be happy to discuss over the phone.
All right, so that's the, that's the. Obviously, we applaud them, thank you very much. Anything you can do would be appreciated. You know, based on the crash that they had, it just didn't warrant additional measures like flashing lights or special, special stop signs or anything apparently, so.
There is somewhat of a visibility issue there.
Now, let's see.
On the northeast side of the road. But it's been that way. On the back of it.
It's vegetation.
It's root trees.
So it cut back off the rest now.
Now we have new owners there now, maybe they'll.
Maybe they'll do something.
Be more inclined, especially, we talked to them next spring, next May after the leaves come out. A lot more obvious that they may cooperate, I'm sure.
It's sort of like a little rise in the road and you can't really, when you're sitting there, you can't see that far down the road towards Clifton, you know. Vegetation or, it's the rise, it kind of, it creates a blind spot.
Any other discussion regarding that intersection? No. And maybe move on to the amendment of permanent appropriations.
We want to increase workers' comp in the general fund by two hundred and thirty dollars. Increase office supplies in the general fund by two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Road and Bridge, we're going to increase salaries by forty-five hundred, which is probably far more than we need, but I just really don't want to get stuck with not having enough. Like maybe if there was overtime every day, whatever, I just pulled a number out. Increase Medicare by a hundred and fifty and workers' comp by two hundred and ninety-one. The cemetery fund increased contracted services by thirty-seven fifty. And the fire fund increased medical hospitalization by eight hundred and four and travel and meeting expenses by nine hundred and sixty-two. And just as a note on the workers' comp thing, they've now changed the payment schedule for workers' comp and our first installment is due January fourth first, or something like that. So anyway, I just needed to get it taken care of now. Just because it wouldn't get in the mail, you know, after next meeting so forth. So that's why I'm paying workers' comp again.
They went to a pay ahead, right?
Yes.
It was some strange thing, they gave us a free year or three, six months.
It's very, very confusing and I was hoping nobody asked me to really explain it too much because it, you know, it's just, it's very, it seems like, and I've been speaking to somebody at workers' comp. it's very, it seems like, and I remember speaking to somebody at workers' comp. He, I said, this seems like a kind of a confusing way to, to refund money to us. The whole thing, he said, yeah, it is, it's not that, but anyway, fact is, that's what's happening. So we'll have four payments in twenty seventeen for the same amount that the check is cut for. Was it twenty-six, fifty-four, forty-five, fifty, whatever it is. So there'll be four of those. And that's why I had to, we were good for the year until this payment came about, so that's why it's in this resolution. So that's it.
What's the resolution number?
I'm sorry, twenty sixteen dash twenty-four.
May I be approved? Second.
All right. If there is no further discussion regarding the resolution, what's the number again?
Twenty sixteen dash twenty-four.
Okay. May we take a vote?
Mr. Crockett?
Yes.
Mr. Strickland?
Yes.
Mr. Meacher?
Yes.
And, and still haven't heard anything from the auditor's office regarding the audit for.
Amazing.
Twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
Couple of quick questions, if I might.
Sure.
Which fund, or if it's, if it actually happened, did the payment for the auction off medic go into?
Uh, it was, I, I basically applied it to the purchase of an ambulance, of the ambulance. Since it was an ambulance that we sold to help offset the cost of the ambulance, I put it back in there.
Back in where?
Um, I, I put, I, I, I put it, it didn't show up in this, in this, it won't show up on this report, because what I did was you go to the check that I actually wrote for the ambulance, and you apply that payment to that actual check, which reduces the cost of that check. So I don't know, I took two, I took the money for the ambulance out of both funds. And I, off the top of my head, don't remember which, if it was the amount that I took out of twenty-two eighty-one or twenty-one ninety-one, but I, I've got the, I can go get the piece of paper and tell you exactly where I put it. I mean, whether or not, I think, I think I went back into twenty-one ninety-one.
So there's eighty-four sixty unused in that motor vehicle plug? Is that what the line was?
Oh, oh, oh. Yeah. That's, that's the dollar not right there. Yep.
So what's the benefit of doing that way as opposed to putting in revenue into a revenue line?
It's, it's kind of the, it's kind of the same difference. What, what it did was it put money back in that rep, in that appropriation line. So, you know, we had spent this much, but now we got this much back in that particular line item.
But it is technically revenue, I mean, it's miscellaneous revenue.
Well, but, yes, but it, it is, it is revenue, but like I said, you know, we kind of, when we, we sold an ambulance to help offset the cost of the new ambulance. It's kind of like being reimbursed when we do anything that, and we get money back for, from other, another source that applies directly to the purchase of what we did. Like, we bought, we bought an ID machine for, for, you know, badges and stuff. And, and then get money from, when people, like the YSPD reimbursed us for some of it, you put it back right, you put it right back, that money is to be applied to the purchase of that machine. So you put it right back in that same line item, where.
But doesn't leave a paper trail?
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, there's a paper trail.
Well, it's a lot easier for somebody who's actually, you know, balancing those accounts to, to know where that happens, but poor schmucks like us.
You're not a poor schmuck.
It's.
Number one.
It's hard to keep track of what's going in.
You found it.
What's going in and coming out.
Yeah, well, this, this eighty-four sixty went right back to where the, the cost of the ambulance came from. And that seemed to be very appropriate, because that's what you wanted to do with that, selling that ambulance, is put it towards the cost of the new one. So we did.
And how much was it?
We got eighty-four sixty out of that, eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars out of that ambulance.
Think the auditors are gonna be okay with the debt?
Oh, sure. I don't see why they wouldn't. But we want to make sure that you guys are all happy with it, and if you'd rather me, I can readjust that. And then what I would do is, you know, where it's gonna go, if I, if I'm gonna enter that as a straight revenue with no application anywhere in particular, then it would just go into other financing services, right from the bottom line here, the nine ninety-nine.
Yeah, I know, that's.
Yeah, I mean, that's where you're looking for.
That's where I look for, you know, something to show up.
Right, right, but to me, I, like I said, I don't repeat myself, because I have. So that's where it is, and if you'd rather see it in a different place, to me, it just made sense to put it where we intended it to be applying to.
Okay. The other question I had, I gotta check over that real quick, since I've made too many circles. I think it's, oh, I think it's in. In gas tax, twenty twenty-one, three thirty-one ninety, other salaries. Appropriations, page two. We appropriated five thousand in that and didn't spend a dime. What was that initially for?
Wait, hold on, I'm on the right page here.
Page two.
What was that initially for?
Yeah. I mean, what were we supposed to be using that for that we haven't used a dime of? Other salaries, three thirty-one.
Right, right. We probably just put that in there, kind of, to maybe pay, to pay somebody to work for the road department. I guess, maybe when that was set up, I think, you know, when we set up this appropriation, we maybe still had, we're running on that figure from when we had Mr. Finn here, is my guess. Because I paid, you know, the part-time help out of Rhode and Bridge, not out of gas tax. So basically, we probably don't need that in there anymore. I don't remember particularly the reason why we left that in there.
Back in the old days, we used to have a line of salaries that was specific for work that was done on fire equipment, and it came out of, I don't know, that was in the fire.
That's in fire. That's in fire, there is, there is a line there.
Is that still there?
Yep. It's like the fifth from the bottom. And.
With a hundred dollar figure?
Well, you know, back in the day, you know, there were, there was a road employee who did a lot more work on, on the fire department.
I know.
But that doesn't happen anymore.
I still lose a lot on it if I do something.
Yeah, you, you, you earned forty dollars and thirty-four cents.
Yeah, we spent forty dollars and thirty-four cents on it.
So, you know, you know, maybe we don't need that line item, but you never know.
You never know.
You never know, I mean, you know, our road guy is currently, he's a pretty handy person, he might, he called to do something to this, you know, fix a door, whatever, that's probably what it was. I remember. So, you know, yeah, we could, that circle, if you circled that salary amount in gas tax, we still need it there anymore. Or we can pay, if we want to pay part-time help out of that, out of that fund instead?
No, what I would do is pick some rows next year, that's why I'm looking for a couple of bucks.
Oh.
Here and there.
Okay, well, sure. Yeah, well, but we would, we would put that, that five thousand somewhere else.
Okay.
Not in the salaries. We'd put it in, you know, contractor services and whatnot. Anyway.
Last thing I had, and it's not necessarily for you, but I'll just throw this out. Did anyone get notified from our insurance company, of course, you guys, that your prescription drug coverage changed as of December one?
We did.
Got pamphlet, haven't got my new card yet. So anytime I buy my prescriptions, I have to fix them.
No, we keep your receipts, because you can get reimbursed.
Well, I didn't, I didn't get them yet, so we don't have code.
All right, well, but don't go without meds if you need them. Because Colin, Colin has gone through the same thing.
Well, he told us it changed, didn't he? Didn't Steve say that?
Yeah, yeah, and Colin contacted Cigna, is that right, who it is? And, and they are having some issues. They know that they're behind, and it's, the company is aware of it. And they're the ones that told Colin to keep the receipts of whatever he's purchased, and he, you know, it'll be applied to, you know, the coverage, once they get it together. Now, and we're not, it's not just my township that they're having a problem with, and I don't know what the problem is, and how they can't fit the cars, or I don't know what it is, but, but it's, it is an acknowledged problem and the work on it.
Medicare now, it's like.
Well, he doesn't circle the.
It will be January one.
Right.
I'm still on Cigna.
Well, it's up to you, but I mean, you know, if you need to have blood pressure or something.
Yeah, that's why there's blood pressure.
But anybody else has got a deal.
Yeah, then you can get your money back.
You're not concerned about yourself?
I didn't.
Right, sir.
That's okay, he's, he's.
I didn't, see, I didn't get any of that information, so it was, it was a surprise when I went to get some drugs, and they said, sorry, you don't have insurance anymore.
Right, well, that's a problem, yeah.
So I got that, I got that figured out, and then I got to thinking, well, I didn't get anything, I wonder if, you know, we've got.
Nobody's.
I got this paper in mail from them that said that I would soon be receiving my card.
But nobody has received the card, so you don't have any, you can't prove that you have any coverage when you go buy any medication, yet. But Steve Ackley's aware of it, and Cigna's aware of it, and I don't, and it should be fixed soon.
It told me over the phone the information to tell the pharmacist.
Oh, okay.
To put me into their system, and they did, and.
And they said you don't have any?
No, they said, yeah, they covered me.
Oh, good.
And, you know.
Okay, I think, well, Colin.
I'm very agree with the pharmacist's information.
That Cigna gave me. I mean, I'd be happy to give it to anybody if I needed.
Is this group number ID or something, is that why you?
No, there's like, there's like three different identification codes.
Did it have a number strictly for you, and I don't know.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's generic. It's gotta be just generic for the township, it can't be just.
Right, I think it would apply to our.
It just said ID, group ID, and whatever number or whatever.
Something like that.
Didn't have mine, personal, like, number.
No, it was plan and VIN and RX number and such and such. And it worked fine.
That's good to know, if somebody, you know.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, no, yeah. Hopefully they did.
Right, no.
I don't always say.
I'm gonna get mine, too.
It's not inconveniencing people.
I can get mine, they said, oh, it'll be thirty-four bucks. It says, you don't have any medication.
But it's only since the beginning of December.
Right, and I didn't, I was able to refill my, my monthly script, and she said, oh, you don't, it's cash pay, you know. Not a card yet. Which is okay, if, if I'll try the numbers, maybe.
Yeah, I'll give you them.
Sure.
All right, well, that was my question for the.
Well, that's a good question. I think you'll see, you saw in the, in the bills that I paid, that paid for all three of you guys for your first, for the first three months of twenty seventeen, for your insurance companies.
All right.
Okay, I don't have anything else. I wish you all a happy Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
To the merry of Christmas.
And if Colin was here, I believe Hanukkah falls on the same day.
Yeah.
This year.
There is something like that going on, isn't there?
All right. So where is Colin?
Out there.
Okay.
Tesky for private business, I swear. Do away with that from two thousand seventeen.
No more private business. If there are no additional questions for Maru, may we move on to standing committee reports?
I just happen to have my latest MBRPC attended with me, and reviewing it. Just one thing of note, I thought it was interesting that a large township in Warren County, a very urbanized township, asked to join MBRPC and leave their Cincinnati-based, it's called an MPO, metropolitan, something organization. And the group accepted it, and they'll bring, oh, about half a million dollars worth of federal aid money that they've been receiving with them. And it's, it's a real, you know, it's a real pat on the back, I think, to the Mindvalley regional planning, that somebody else, you know, wants to leave where they are and come to us, because they feel they get better, you know, better recognition as a, as a clinical subdivision.
Is it the Austin Landing Township?
Uh, no, that's still in Montgomery County. It's, it's Warren County, it's the city of Franklin, it's Franklin Township. But other than that.
Did they say why?
Well, they felt they weren't getting the kind of representation, you know, that they felt they deserved within the MPO that they were in, which includes greater Hamilton County, you know, the Cincinnati area and all the surrounding, you know, and those, those certain surrounding counties. I'm not sure how large or what all that includes, but I think they felt like they were being short-changed, you know, with what might be due them. They ended up being a little further down the, further down the pecking order than they, they thought they warranted. They had been a non-voting member of MBRPC for about ten years. So they knew, you know, what they potentially were getting into, and, and, you know, when they made that decision to pull the plug, pull the trigger and, and make the move, that was the reasoning that they were doing, that they felt it would be better fit for them with us. So welcome Franklin Township.
Yeah.
And the other meetings were canceled, regional planning, I had talked about that at the last meeting. There is one, there's a, there's executive meeting tomorrow, and there will be, oh, there will not be a regular meeting next Tuesday. And the bill's fine.
Yeah, pretty good crowd down there, really.
Yeah, sure do. All right.
Remember what night that was? Remember, Tuesday? Was it Tuesday night in the snow? Quite a few cars down. It's all there, it was wooden. See there?
Economic Sustainability Committee. Undoubtedly, they had a meeting, I did not attend it, and so I don't have anything to report. That's it?
No business, no new business, no old business?
No cemetery business, no Clifton cemetery business, nothing happened since.
Move away, John.
That was a, that was a yes.
Is that, are you guys okay with what Martin said?
Whatever he said.
Yeah, whatever came with.
Okay.